Your timer.
Yeah, that's the one that I've got.
Thank you so much.
You stole a frog.
He stole some stuff. They're using the helicopter to find. They're the names. We are a lot. It's nice school.
Well, I'm going to be careful. Did you even know such? Well, you know, they were little. That gets a little bit bad too.
Yeah. That's November fourteenth meeting of the Raleigh County Commission to order. Please everybody join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Good morning, welcome back.
Thanks. Yeah, good to be back. I'm. Okay, we'll start off with some public comment this morning, anybody? Sorry, so we're trying to adjust things here.
Trying to get it all sorted out.
Good. Okay.
Have your heard news.
All right, all right, well, I'll see in the public comments then I'll go ahead and go over the commission comments and start with commission.
All right. Well, Monday was Veterans Day Parade. I think every child in the county must have been there, you know, the kids lining. Driving down through, I thought, God, they're all here watching and then started the parade and they're all in the parade and the rest of them were all in the parade. There was a lot of kids out there and it was, it was good weather and a large parade again. Thanks, the foothills veterans coalition for putting this on and personally thanks to all the crew that helped to put up the barricades. Tuesday was meeting with the contractor for the EMS building. They're progressing well right now and roofing should be completed in the next couple of weeks, which really allows the interior to take off. Get going, it's. It'll. If we get the outside done, it'll look like it's all done, but it'll be a long time getting it. It'll look slow because all the work's inside, but right now it's outside's making quick progress.
Yeah, it looks really good.
Got a lot of masonry up on the outside. It's moving along. That's all I've got.
Okay. Well, last Friday I did the Mike Madsen show and came in radio in the morning. Commissioner Ford was unable to be there, so Mike asked me to fill in. However, Mike wasn't there.
Yeah. Two fill-ins.
And, and Megan Moser filled in for him. So that was her first time, so it was kind of interesting, you know, like Mike said all that, so.
He had told me that he was going to be out of town for that and then I had to text him quickly and say, I can't be there either.
Well, he didn't mention that to me that he was.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that was Megan's first time on the show.
Oh, yeah, it was, she, she did all right, but you know, it was kind of, you know, wrecking for her. So we did have a full hour to discuss various county issues and programs. The Monday I two attended the Veterans Day Parade afterwards. The program at Peace Memorial Auditorium honoring veterans and their families. Winners of the essay contest, a high school student and a middle, middle school student both read their essays to the audience. This is a good, good event. Tuesday, during the day, I had some meetings at my church on some topics. That evening, I attended a meeting for the Keys community, which we had set up to give them updates on the wastewater system progress. Brian Foster with BG Consultants did a presentation in the ongoing design process. And work that needs to be done prior to construction. Amanda gave an update on grants and other financials. We're still, still working on the grant loan from the USDA, but they keep adding new requirements and things to send in, so it hasn't been totally resolved yet. We're also waiting for the determination on the grant submitted to the state water board. And hopefully will the awards will be announced by the end of the year to help offset that, that extra million dollars that we're needing. Members of the community asked a lot of questions about the process going forward. And we're invited to come to that Brian and Sean about particulars on their individual properties. He was wanting to get together with each of their properties and discuss where the lines would go and so. Several questions came up on legal issues, which plans he was able to address. Let's say, the Wednesday morning, I attended a meeting of the Substance Misuse Task Force at the Family and Child Resource Center. Presentations were made by community partners, including LaFine Health Center, the DCF, the CKF and and the Health Department Educator Jenny Ebert. I don't know what all those acronyms stand for offhand, but you know.
No deal.
Afterwards, it came in the office, met with Clancy and Bryant to discuss the Keys meeting from the previous night, plus some other issues. I spent some time in the office going over today's meeting agenda and documents. That's all I have.
Okay, no, as for me, that most of my time away, as you can probably imagine, but Friday we had our visitation and celebration of life for my mom at the funeral over there in downtown Elizabeth Town. Very well attended, struck me for somebody who was pretty introverted. Well, she touched a lot of lives and there was a lot of people there, it was pretty cool, actually. Saturday, we had another small visitation for those that couldn't join us on Friday, a lot of people were kind of traveling out and about. And then we buried her up at the Round Top First Baptist Church. It's just outside of town there, it's the church she attended, she taught Bible school for kids and for many, many years until she got too sick to be able to do so, so, but I also wanted to thank the members of the church who also provided dinner for the family and friends after the services and it was, it, that was a lot. Yeah, fried chicken and they had everything there, so really, we really appreciated that, it's really made all the difference in the world considering. Spent some time obviously with family and friends over the weekend and this was a great comfort during this difficult time. Monday, I was actually able to catch parts of the Veterans Day Parade and the ceremony on Facebook Live. Appreciating the opportunity to be able to do that since, of course, I couldn't be here in person. Tuesday, I came back home, got back to Manhattan around two thirty, got unpacked, kind of unwinding from the week's events and kind of starting the process of just moving forward. Wednesday afternoon, I spent some time down here at the office getting caught up and getting ready for the rest of the week, the weekend and next week as well, so I'm trying to get out in ahead of everything. And then also yesterday afternoon, I had my monthly meeting of the Community Economic and Workforce Development Steering Committee. After some opening remarks from our vice chair, our regular chair, I had a scheduling conflict, but our vice chair, Demond Mason, he's commissioner from Newton County, Georgia, gave some opening remarks and some discussion. We also heard from guest speaker number one, Jeff Olivet, he was the executive director of the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness. And he discussed the federal homelessness prevention framework overview and answered some questions and kind of gave a thorough discussion about that. Guest speaker number two was Jenna Louie, Chief Innovation and Strategy Officer for Ivory Innovations. She gave a presentation on the case for innovation in housing and how local governments can drive solutions for it. Michael Matthews, our legislative director for the committee, gave us a legislative update from Capitol Hill. Of course, Congress reconvened this last week, kind of the lame duck session of sorts. Gave us an update on what they're working on, really, it was just major, probably two things they'll work on here in the fall and that's getting a continuing resolution to fund the government and getting the National Defense Authorization Act done between now and January and then new Congress will move forward with whatever. Discussed a little bit about post-election cycle, of course, there was a lot to go through there, obviously, and then we had a quick open discussion and closed with the vice chairman in the meeting and that's basically all I've got.
Ready for business commissioners? First item I have, need a motion for the board to sign a letter of support for Cox Communications BEAD grant application.
I would make a motion to authorize the board signing a letter of support Cox Communications BEAD grant application.
Second. Been moved and seconded to board sign a letter of support for Cox Communications BEAD grant applications at stake. All in favor?
Aye.
All three sign please.
Now it's getting cold. Now it's getting chilly in here.
Snow next week, Catherine, snow.
I don't mind snow.
Higher forty, we're gonna open the doors.
Oh, yes. Well, we're already getting it.
Actually, we don't need to, the window's already open. We get good natural fresh air in this building.
This came out, though.
Yeah, that was cool.
Oh, was it?
But it's really, it's very uneven, because like my office, I go in there when the door shuts and it's freezing.
Yeah, it is, it is for sure.
So I've turned on a little space here, but I don't know why it's so uneven.
Next commission need the board to sign a letter of support for Twin Valley Telephones BEAD grant application.
I'd move up, moved authorize the board to sign the letter of support for Twin Valley Telephones BEAD grant application.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to the board sign a letter of support for Twin Valley Telephones BEAD grant application to state, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All three sign please.
I guess the same letter.
It is.
Isn't really supposed to snow?
It is. Yeah, I'm not pulling your leg, it really is. Cindy Cable's thrilled about it too, Cindy Cable's thrilled about it.
Well, I like snow, but I don't like shoveling the snow.
Bless you.
Yep.
Need another one? Next commission, they need a commission to make a motion to approve request for proposals. Number two zero two four dash B deadline to extend December thirteenth, twenty twenty four, twelve noon.
Commissioners, Clancy Holman, Raleigh County Councilor, purpose of the, what you've got in front of you is simply is it's the same R and P that was previously, it expired and at the board's request, you're extending this under the same terms. Nothing in it different other than the deadline to respond. Nothing's changed regarding compensation or any of those provisions. So you're aware of this, the ability for anybody to respond will be close to business on the thirteenth of December. Glad to answer.
Okay, I would make a motion to extend the deadline to December thirteenth, twelve PM. On the request for proposal number twenty twenty four B, as requested.
Second.
We moved and seconded to extend the deadline to December thirteenth, twenty twenty four, twelve PM. And we'll publish as request for proposals number two zero two four dash B, one signed, all in favor?
Aye.
All three sign please.
Thank you.
I wouldn't have minded no for the Saturday night game, because if you watch pro or college or anything, warm state teams do not do that well, ever.
We didn't do very well against Iowa State last year, it was raining, it was snowing like crazy.
Mm-hmm, but they're used to it as well, even more so.
Yeah, it didn't help us.
They're used to it as well.
On Saturday, I could deal with some snow.
Yeah, I know that, that's the rain.
It's a late game, I'll actually get to watch it.
Another six o'clock game.
I've got to deal with snow and a hundred degrees.
Yeah, me too.
Snow, the public, the snow is the next weekend, right? The snow is until next weekend.
It's Wednesday and Thursday next week.
Oh, Wednesday and Thursday, that's the weekend. Rain.
Like two inches Monday maybe, Sunday night, Monday. Hopefully. Oh, not getting that one back. Oh, I can tell by that reaction, oh, nice.
Told you to get them back.
Now mine. Okay, it's the counselor's budget.
Which I signed off on.
That's, that's right. That's right. We know where our bread is buttered.
Next commission need a motion to approve lease renewal agreement with GJL Real Estate Limited Partnership, Raleigh County Police Department, Aggieville Substation.
Commissioner, Clancy Holman, Raleigh County Councilor, again, again, this is the annual renewal. You, Rick, does this as a public service and assists RCBD, it's obviously valued to have a substation there. It is an increase of twenty five dollars over last year and as usual, it's below market, has been over some time. Glad to answer your questions.
I do, the board authorized chairman to sign the lease as presented.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded and board authorized the chairman to sign the lease as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Next commission need a motion to approve contractual provisions of attachment with Local Media Inc. Doing business as first do Delaware Corporation Fire Reporting Software attached to the agreement for services.
See, um, it says, um, it's going to be a year before it's in effect, but the contract doesn't say that.
Twenty commissioners, county fire, now it'll, as soon as we sign it, they'll start the transfer process of, of getting all our data into it and hopefully it'll go into effect first of the year and then it'll be a year to year contract after that. So the first period will be thirteen months.
Cause I couldn't see that in here, but. Lot of words.
We say that every day in the county council offices.
Okay, I lost for a minute, moved to approve the chair to sign the standard Raleigh County contractual provisions document for fire reporting software.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the chair to sign the standard Raleigh County contractual provision document for fire reporting software, in favor? Chair, please sign.
Commissioners, I have Raleigh County Employee Action Form, Alyssa McCoy, Public Health Nurse Health Department Separation of Service. Ryan Brock, new hire Paramedic EMS Ambulance Department. Lauren Mear, Reclassificational Estate Specialist in Clerk's Office. Chase Marquez, firefighter, volunteer firefighter, fire district number one, separation of service. Dan Creek, new hire Health Department Director, all three please sign. Commissioners, I don't imagine you have any items for the joint city-county is the one will probably be a lot of discussion. RHID, or do you have anything else you would like to add?
Not for November, but I'll have something for December. And that's at the city, right?
Yes, it is. And then intergovernmental luncheon, would all of you like to attend?
Yeah, yeah.
Does it say what their agenda is?
Does it say what?
It says what their agenda is.
That's a.
Grant sent out.
Pony, isn't it? No, 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 that's not, that's Good Morning Manhattan, I'm thinking of, uh, no, I don't.
Um, no, Grant was sending out an email to see what, gauging what interest there was for this meeting since it's the week of Thanksgiving, so we may or may not have.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I remember that. Team counselor, I want to attend the intergovernmental.
You write me down.
Team counselors.
I did.
Was the reason why I don't sleep at night.
You're welcome.
Thanks, sir, there to read all of, all of those words in small font. It was a lame being one. Thank you. Commissioners, can I get a motion to approve payroll and accounts payable?
Second.
I would make a motion to approve payroll and accounts payable.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve payroll and accounts payable, all in favor?
Aye.
All three please sign. Commissioners, any changes of the minutes? Your motion?
I made the approval minutes in November seventh meeting as presented.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes in November seventh, two thousand twenty four meeting in Raleigh County Commission, it's written, all in favor?
Any items for next speech of press conference? I would gladly not be on on elections.
Yeah, I looked at that list, I was thinking, eh, may not make it this time.
A lot into the business meetings.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get through, it's not the lame Mr. Holman's lecture session. Going full time, Clancy?
Yeah, I think so, please.
Commissioners, you have Mr. Holman at nine o'clock, an executive session.
Hundred bucks. Yes. And so we got it and they said it was huge and I'm like, okay. I couldn't figure out how it even, I guess there's a scuff on it and I I just had, I had to show that.
I like it.
Shining, yeah, it is shining.
What'd you get?
Hundred bucks on eBay.
You can find some good deals on eBay.
You're telling me. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Right.
So, uh, you'll appreciate this. While I was gone, I got to see the, the Holy Grail of bourbon. Really?
Can't believe the cost of it.
Twenty-three year bottle of happy van. Do you know what the price was?
I am afraid.
Take a wild guess.
Take a, take a wild guess.
Thousand bucks.
Oh, no, not even close.
You kind of stutter.
Not even close.
I pray tell.
Sixty-two hundred bucks.
That better change your life. Like you would need to sit down and that would.
I thought about it long and hard and I thought, you know, that's a special occasion thing only and I'm out of them. I don't have anymore to have, so it's pointless.
I know. It's true, and there are more legal barriers.
It's true, no more legal barriers. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not to hold it and everything. You get, wow, they let you?
They did. They watched a close.
That'd be all I need, then I'd have to run.
John was thinking, I outrun this guy.
Well, see, that was the whole thing. I don't need to outrun the other guy. I just need to outrun the people I was with. So instead I settled for a twelve-year bottle while it was a little cheaper.
Yeah, that's still good.
Those two hundred and fifty bucks instead of sixty-two hundred.
Say, that's still very fine, Bob.
But I, I had one of those moments, so I was like. I could do it. I don't know why I'm gonna do this, but I could do it, but I didn't. But, yeah, my guess is it'll probably be there next year when I, when I return. I hate it'll be cheap, but we'll see.
I bet so. I bet maybe that bottle has your name on it.
Uh, let's see. Um, I move the county commission, including Chairman Ford, Vice Chairman McKinley, Commissioner Fokie, recess into executive session. On potential litigation with Clancy Holman, County Counselor. And Brian Parker and Jacob Hanson, Deputy County Counselors, Attorneys for the Commission. Which we deem privileged in attorney-client relationship. With exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act. Open Meetings resume in the County Commission Chambers at nine twenty AM.
I like how you um put the S in. And bold.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded at the County Commission, including Chairman Ford. Vice Chairman McKinley and Commissioner Fokie recess into executive session. On potential litigation with Clancy Holman County Counselor and Brian. Deputy County Counselors, Attorneys. For the Commission, which we deem privileged in the attorney-client relationship, with exception against. Open Meetings Act and the Open Commission, Open Meetings. Commission to resume the Commission Chamber at nine twenty twenty, nine twenty AM. All in favor?
That's good.
Good night.
Now, now we're back.
I move the board of county commissioners come out of executive session.
I would second that.
It moved a second, the board of county commissioners come out of executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, for remove the record reflect action, so we take in consistent with the consensus reached in executive session.
I would second that.
It moved a second that the record reflect action, so I'll be taking consistent with the consensus reached in executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Next commissioner, it's time for Amanda Webb.
She's right.
Yeah.
Um, good morning commissioners, Amanda Webb, planning director. Um, I am here to request and fill the full-time administrative assistant one position that you folks approved with the twenty twenty-five budget earlier this year. Again, thank you so much for approving that position, I really appreciate it. And it is time to get it opened up for advertising, so we can have Phil have somebody start immediately after the last of the year. Um, in your packet, you have the job description and administrative assistant one. Um, just a reminder, the position will support everybody in the department with the with the specific focus on environmental health. And that was a big part of the position, have that extra assistance for environmental health options. Um, and of course provide general test service, best reception, all of that, so. Three things in your pocket, but I'm happy to answer any questions we might have. And it has been, of course, because you folks approved it, I just wanna remind you, it's already figured into the twenty twenty-five budget.
I would make a motion to, um, Bill, to advertise for the the planning and development administrative assistant one position in planning department.
Second. It's been moved in second, excuse me. It's been moved in second, do we OCC allow the physician to be open for advertising and the planning and development department, all in favor?
Aye. All three sign please. Next commissioner, Shiloh Higginson, not ten thirty, nine thirty. Wanting to go fast.
I'm here for this.
You just wanted to skip past that canvas.
Yeah, get it done with.
Yeah, we'll push it off till Monday, you say?
No, I want it done, I do not wanna push it off.
Don't you have some more ballots to count, something, don't you?
I think I moved it up, so we would get done earlier.
Didn't the secretary of state say we can count ballots all the way until next week?
Till when?
Till next week, didn't they?
Oh, yeah, uh huh, sure, I caboshed that idea.
So that one, is that that one cent raise, they're still counting ballots.
Oh, really?
In Leavenworth, Wyandotte County.
Oh, really?
It was Jeff.
Pittman and, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And who?
Pittman.
Got a close range, huh?
Less than fifty.
Oh, goodness.
Last check, it was at thirty-seven, really, six or seven games. We did see this morning, the, um, the US House, the Republicans reached two eight, two eighteen, so, yeah. Don't you feel that? Sneak up on him, everybody else has. I'm here for it. I'm also gonna swap out this brick, sleep computers right. Personal. Personal brick, which I like, but it's a brick. It's sturdy. Thank you. Of course. In one of these. Yes. Now you got people delivering your coffee in here. I can meet her, yeah, no, I.
Looks like a present.
And you know, it's disguised, it's a present here. This is, this is, this is.
We give for coffee, I saw.
Seventeen, row nine.
Hmm?
Row nine, basically down courtside.
Oh, you're going to tonight's game, oh, good for you. I made a note, so hopefully I remember to watch it, at least.
Yeah, we're playing LSU.
Yeah, with Carter.
Yeah, should be a pretty good game.
Let's hope not, let's hope the flop side is our way. But they're a good team, so yeah, should be, you're right.
Something like twenty-five points the other night.
That's not good news for us.
The girls play Creighton right before, and so and they're ranked, so it should be, that should be a good game.
It's here.
Yeah.
You going to it, doubleheader?
Yeah.
Yeah, date night, huh? Date night.
Figure might as well, since.
Yeah.
If you buy.
Well, I tell you what, boy, uh, they hit the recruiting trail hard on the women's side, we got the sixth ranked class in the country and one of the top players.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna be good for a while.
They're fun, they're fun to watch.
They really are, they play. They play inside of each other, you know, it's not robotic or anything, I mean, lots of energy, I've I'd like watching them. Just get past that sweet sixteen round.
Yep.
Oh, we got Ulta, she can shoot.
Oh.
She can flat out shoot from anywhere on the court.
Oh, yeah.
Any bets the Chiefs stay undefeated this weekend?
Are they playing again?
Bills. And Buffalo.
I think once, like sixteen in a row, if you go back to the playoffs and the end of last season, so.
Really okay if they don't, I'm all for an early or mid-season loss to keep you focused. One loss doesn't kill your season and you go in undefeated, you think you're on top of the world and college too, I'm in favor of a good loss to get you refocused.
Hopefully they got a little bit of that last week.
But they've done that every game, they don't play three quarters and oh, guess we better wake up and win the game. They do that every week on the fourth quarter. When they have to do it, they just do it.
Certainly that. Be interesting to see if they can pull it off here. If there's one to lose, it'd be this.
I hope that loss the cats had, kind of woke them up and does finish up strong.
I guess Arizona State team isn't a bad team, but you know, they're pretty, pretty good.
Running backs really good, they got a really stud linebacker.
They do, they got a pretty stout secondary.
Not sure if the linebacker's back, I know the running back is.
Whereas our run defense is kind of our strength, so strength on strength there, but.
Our secondary.
I know. Well, even just our pass rush in general, I mean, it always just seemed to be, just got the athleticism, but we don't have the speed.
And our offensive line hasn't got the, uh, run block aggressiveness down.
Yeah. I like to see us just come out and just flat put the pedal down.
I think a lot of people have a point and it'd be beneficial to have Riley down on the sidelines in those linemen's ear, because there's no doubt he's an ace offensive line coach, but I think great drive, he needs to be down on the sidelines. So, did he have one in there for you commissioner, Bob, did he get you anything? No, evaluation time's coming up.
I need to expand my budget, which is already a huge.
Expand?
It is a, it is a substantial line item.
Yeah, but when you own the stock, you just pay yourself back, you know.
That's right, that's right. We have to have a new one, one fifty-one or whatever it is. Oh, I, I'm counting the names. I think they named it one fifty-one for the number of coffee shops we actually have.
Never heard of them, are they supposed to be really good, or?
It's a chain, I figured, not, not a big one, but it's. That's what.
Obviously, their market was bigger than the store.
The number of Mexican restaurants with a number of coffee shops.
No. Oh, I know what I, they just bring red cup, anyone likes a red cup?
I, I don't, I didn't have a part of it, too, but I think it's okay.
And then. I, well, it's open, it's Starbucks is giving. No. If you, I mean, I have an extra, uh, large latte with syrup if you want one. You can, you don't need, you don't need, okay, that's no, I'll find a home for it. I refuse. Save us, Shiloh, please. We should take, you know, the watching, but.
Yes, it'd be a tasty, cool day like this.
Yeah, it was kind of a, it's going to be thirty-four degrees in the local.
I had thirty at my house.
I left all the windows open, see those little children?
Oh, goodness.
I like it that window.
Yeah, we opened our window, don't know, I like it cool in your state.
I usually do, but.
Great commissioner.
Go ahead.
All right. Good morning commissioners, I'm David Riley, county treasurer with the October revenue figures. So, um, October, we're the beginning of the last quarter. We ended the month of October with a balance in the general fund of twelve million eight hundred forty-six thousand four ninety-eight fifty-seven. Um, we currently have a balance in the disaster fund, the ARCA fund money of ten million thirty-five thousand one eighty. We ended the month of October with a total fund balance of seventy-four million six fifteen nine oh four. Um, one thing I wanted to, um, I'll just go to the next page, our year-to-date, investment income is two million five seventeen four sixty-five and interest to date in the ARCA fund is seven hundred five hundred seventy-three thousand seven sixty-three. The interest rate for October on the active checking account was four point nine five percent. Um, so it is going down just a little bit. Our interest rate, um, on our CD bids for the month of October were four point two one percent. And I, um, once again, I am on track to have just about fifteen thousand dollars, um, invested for the calendar year, um, by the end of the calendar year. Our general fund revenue for the month of October was one million eighty-three thousand four thirty-five. One thing I did wanna point out on this investment interest line item. We did have total investment income for the month of October of two hundred eighty-seven thousand one fifteen, but we made the quarterly transfer this month to, um, which was we transferred to, um, CIP, um, CIP emergency management, the tech funds, and RCPD has two funds that were required to transfer interest to. That total transfer was three hundred and eighty-two thousand four fifty-seven, and I'll just point that out on this report shows what we have transferred year-to-date, so we are done with transfers for the, for the year.
What two funds for RCPD seizure and what?
They have two seizure funds, a federal seizure fund and a state seizure fund, and when that was established, they the money that's in that fund, they get the interest that, um, that would have accrued if they had that in their own account, so. Um, and so that shows you right there, you know, the total amount that we transferred into CIP just for interest is just over one million dollars. So I just wanted to point that out, because I'm having negative interest. Um, you can see up here, we did make the final tax distribution, so of all of our our taxes, um, you know, we've collected a hundred and seven percent of what was budgeted for motor vehicle, sitting at ninety-seven percent, ninety-eight percent for vehicle rental excise and RVs, um, hundred and two percent of what was budgeted for commercial. We are ninety-seven percent of what was budgeted for total out of alarm taxes for twenty twenty-three tax year. Um, intangibles were over, um, sixteen twenty trucks were over and watercraft is just at ninety-eight percent of what was total, what was budgeted for the, for the tax year. I did run an abstract for, um, where we are sitting for outstanding taxes as of October thirty-first. And for twenty twenty-three, um, we have an outstanding tax balance of one point nine nine percent for total taxes for the twenty twenty-three tax year. And comparatively, I looked at what that outstanding balance was in twenty twenty, for twenty twenty-two tax year, and it was one point three eight percent. So we are a little behind compared to the previous tax year. Um, we are, um, total, we have, um, collected a hundred percent of total funded revenues for the twenty twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-four calendar year. Sales tax, we, the general fund sales tax that was deposited for the month of October was two hundred and thirty-one thousand four fifty-two. Um, that is nineteen point seven two percent higher than this time last year and thirty-eight point eight seven percent over what was budgeted for the month. Year-to-date, we have collected ninety-seven percent of budgeted sales tax, so we're sitting at thirteen point six eight percent over budget for the month of October. For road and bridge, we deposited two hundred and sixty-four thousand three oh eight forty-two, which is about eighteen percent higher than October of twenty-three. Road and bridge, we've collected year-to-date just over two point two million of the two million that was budgeted. This will show you year-to-date. General fund, sales tax year-to-date is three point three one percent higher than at this point twenty last year. And road and bridge obviously is still lower because of the lowering of that sales tax rate. And comparing in August, August sales to July sales, um, seven point two three percent higher for for those, um, periods. Not much change here, retail trade obviously makes up the largest portion of our, of our sales tax. And this shows you how those, those sales tax dollars were distributed among the cities and the county.
Shiloh, what, what is into the other category, let me go back to the chart.
It really, I, it's, it's just a lot of things, I, I can bring you back next month, a report of kind of what, but it's just everything else that I can't, I didn't have a, a category for, um, I can bring you back a, a more detailed report.
Well, I was just, I think it was on the other, it was bigger than.
The one thing that I will tell you is in that for this month were the football, um, ticket sales.
Oh, okay.
So there was a large, um.
Large amount there, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, you don't have to bring it back, I guess, kind.
I know, and I, I noticed that as well, and I know for sure that that's what, what made it a little bit larger than it had been previous.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, the only other thing I'd like to report is tax statements did go out in the mail November, on Friday, November eighth. Um, I will be coming back to do a press, a press release next week to just remind the public of ways that they can pay, we have already started getting payments and, uh, um, so I'll just run the public, if you don't have that tax statement by Thanksgiving, please call our office and we'll be happy to.
I got mine yesterday.
I got mine yesterday as well.
Yeah, it really shows how much the city's got.
Did you actually sing yourself your own?
It just because we outsourced it, yeah. Yeah, it's too hard now to get them all, to get them all. Yeah, it's too hard now to get them off, to get them all pulled. So, yeah, we used to pull like the commissioner, we would hand, and it's just too hard for us to get that. So, so yeah, you'll get yours in the mail. Um, but any questions for me or anything else you'd like me to report on for next month? All right. Have a great rest of your day today.
Go Cats.
You guys are just getting them up, sure. We come least that we get them up there.
City. You know.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Probably Riley, City Riley, there's two. Yeah.
It's probably a small portion.
No, it's pretty good.
Things are not getting any cheaper.
That video you sent, I could not get it on my, when I went home. Usually can pick things up on your phone. It wouldn't let me pick up the email.
Oh, really? Yeah. I watched it on my computer. It's, it's worth watching. There's some good things to think about in there.
Yeah, I need to watch it. I read the com- there's some comments in the paper last night.
Yeah, never.
Well, some of the, I mean, so they had comments, they pulled out comments from some commissioners, which some were surprising. And since, and maybe it shows on the, part of it's in the county, this. The one that.
The greenfield, uh-huh, it's north of Colbert. It would be greenfield, what they call it, is when there's no infrastructure there. It's basically, you're not tearing anything down or anything. It's all brand new.
So part of it's in the, out of, out of the city.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll annex it. Sure, they'll annex it to provide services.
That's what I'm, yeah, but.
It's all in three seventy-eight.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's. Most. It's too before.
Yeah. You'll, you'll see an email like that.
Yeah, I had, didn't have a chance to look that. Then it said in the article, they said we had three different proposals. So we're gonna look at.
One's a redevelopment downtown and one's redevelopment Aggieville, so.
But there are HIDs too. It's allowable.
Apparently. It's property tax.
We're gonna be bringing two of them for sure. We are doing a lot of work on it.
Well, that's what that. Some of you, it's not what I'm saying. Some of you's looking at those Lee Mill Heights, the city, they bought all that land and then they, I thought it was gonna be. Same housing, but it's all just rentals. I thought it's. But the taxes are nothing on it.
Yeah, they're.
I heard they're going somewhere else. Like thirty-seven thousand for housing, so I'm guessing something.
Something's off there.
No, it's not something, I mean, because all of them in that district are that way. Something, there's some, some kind of a tax thing. It was interesting, because we have, there was something else going on in Riley, was Tim and I came to that meeting when they sold those Lee Mill Heights. There was a bunch of contractors who wanted to bid on it, but the city bid them up and bought all of it. They wanted to make the news.
Senior housing, senior housing.
But then I thought, but it's not for sale, it's just rentals, so, yeah. That, like I say, I thought it was for seniors, but it's, the rent is not for the.
He left you. You're flying solo today. I think he, he, he created under pressure.
Bryant talked him into the cup.
Didn't know there were such things as Red Cup Day.
What does that mean?
He's a hell out of me.
You get a holiday drink at Starbucks, you get a pretty red cup.
He bought like four, so he probably has three of them. He's not telling us.
What do you get to do with the red cup?
They're reusable, so.
I just never go to Starbucks.
Sounds like advice from a Starbucks regular.
Yeah. So I didn't get the holiday one. I didn't even shake your bag.
Okay, on that note.
Walking in the middle of the conversation, I don't know what's. Uh, good morning, commissioners. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. Darren Solden, Director of Economic Development, Manhattan, and Chamber of Commerce. Um, just wanted to, I, I'm just gonna give a, a quick update. Uh, I mentioned this last month, our regional, uh, our, our, uh, our economic growth plan that the chamber's been working the last several months on, uh, to put together. And then Christian's got quite a bit of, of content today, so I'll hand it over to her and then happy to answer any questions or discuss other items at the end. But, um, appreciate Christian Ford's involvement over, over a period of months here on the technical advisory committee of this, this growth plan. Just a reminder what that is. This is taking a look at a, um, within our overall economic development strategy. What are some specific things to, to, that can be done? Whether that's related asset development, policy, investments, other initiatives, um, to drive growth within the, within the region, you know? With the understanding that over the last ten years, um, uh, you know, population growth and some other metrics have been relatively flat. Obviously, lost, lost a good number of, of folks at Fort Riley during that time, in K-State during that time. So there has been underlying growth. It's just that growth has not been quite to the level to, uh, to impact that, uh, that final number, um, in a positive manner. And we want to ensure that in the future that that number is being impacted in a positive manner. So that, uh, report and the results of that. The, um, uh, the, the draft of that report was presented to the chamber's board and committee retreat here a couple of weeks ago. Um, and reviewed, uh, there'll be some additional discussion within the chamber process with our board of directors next week as we look at an implementation plan and getting their approval of that. So once it's worked through those internal processes, the chamber, we will bring that to you, um, planning during that next month. Um, if not before, bring that to you and, and get a copy in your hands, see it in review. And then obviously, we'd be happy to, to, uh, to meet and, and answer any questions or discuss and, and, uh, and, or present that, um, in any fashion. If you want that presented in a, in, in, uh, in any fashion, uh, please don't hesitate to ask. We, we'd be important, important, happy to do that as well. So just want to give you a heads up. I think I mentioned last time we're here, it's, it's been a couple of months now, but that, we have that for you, um, soon. And I just want to let you know that we're just finishing up the process within our organization of getting approvals on that. Um, that was privately funded through the chamber effort. So, um, getting approvals on our end and then we'll be ready to, to bring that out publicly. Again, thank you, Christian Ford. We're engaging in a few meetings there and with the consultant on, on, um, on that effort. All right, I will hand it over to Christian then. I said she's got quite a bit on the, on the list today and then happy to answer any questions. She's done.
It's been a long time since we've seen each other. So, um, I just wanted to take this time to thank Commissioner Ford. Um, last time we met, we were actually getting ready to head to AUSA. Um, so now we have, um, come back from AUSA and it's actually been over a month since we've been there. But, um, it was just another great, um, conference with over forty thousand attendees, um, representing over ninety countries. Um, and so it was just great to engage with our Baker Donaldson, um, staffers, our congressional staffers. Um, and then of course, uh, me, Darren, were able to, uh, sit on a panel discussion, um, with key leaders of the army, talking about transition. Um, and kind of giving their call to action to commanders to allowing their soldiers to do a little bit more career skills programming. Um, and so, um, it was great to have Darren, like I mentioned there, but also Mayor Adam Check. It was her first time being able to attend. Uh, and we were able to sit with our partners, um, from Fort Riley Junction City and Garrett County and really collaborate and network. Um, so thank you all again for attending. Um, Kimberly, that we had, um, very amazing weather on Monday for Veterans Day. And the generals' wife, Michelle, had mentioned, she was like, I had my coat, my gloves, my hat. And she was like, I left it in the car and she kind of said, you guys told me it'd be cold. And I was like, well, we're in a heat wave right now, so. Um, but thanks to the great weather, um, Veterans Day went smoothly from the breakfast to having over eighteen hundred participants in the parade. Um, so I can honestly say, um, the trend of getting more participants has gone up. Um, we know we'll probably never reach the before COVID numbers, just because protocols have changed. Um, but to have, um, majority of those eighteen hundred participants be kids, um, for around the surrounding counties, come out and give their respects to veterans was just so touching. Um, and so then we just finished with, uh, the ceremony, which offered, um, one essay winner from the high school and then one essay winner from the junior high that were able to talk about what veterans, uh, veterans helping veterans means. And then Mike Riley was our ceremony. So again, thanks to Commissioner McKinley for all the behind the scenes, um, thanks, cordions that you did. Uh, Commissioner Fokie for joining us on the reviewing stand and of course, attending that ceremony. Um, and then you, Commissioner Ford, for Operation Green Light. Um, it's, I'll start taking the lights down now, um, but it just was great. Um, to see the lights of Third, Fourth and Fifth Street, and it just was perfect that the leaves actually turned this year, so it just kind of reflected off. Um, and so just great to bring the community together for our veterans. Um, so just looking ahead, this Saturday is Fort Riley Day for K-State. Um, I don't know what it is about K-State and late football games, but we will be there on Saturday Night Lights. Um, and one of the great things that is happening is the US Drill Team is performing at halftime. Um, so they'll showcase their talent, but, um, if that's too late for you or football games aren't the things, they are actually doing Drill in the Ville in Aggieville on Friday night. Um, so at six thirty, so like I said, if you don't want to go to the football game, you can go check them out in Aggieville. Uh, and then one last thing, in honor of Veterans Small Business Week, uh, the Flight Hills Vetropreneurs are hosting an Entrepreneur Summit tomorrow um, at the Holiday and Campus. So registration starts at eight. Um, but from nine to one, they will have some networking opportunities and then three breakout sessions. Uh, borrowing basics, demystifying loan opportunities and then market success. Um, and so walk-ins are still welcome. So if you didn't get signed up, please just, um, show up and attend and they'll be registered. But it's just a great way for, um, our vetropreneurs to kind of find their cohort and, and come, come together and work together. So. Have you any questions? It's been a great time.
Thanks for having the ceremony and the parade on Facebook Live, because it was the only way I was gonna be able to catch it. So, thanks, yeah.
Great partnership with the city and that. But thank you guys again for everything.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm in the bear case.
Weekend, go Cats.
Whoa, thank you.
Yeah.
You had quite a game helping you.
Yeah. Next commissioners, we have the canvas at ten o'clock.
I thought we were pushing that off till Monday, Rich.
No way in heck. That's not even funny with this group. That's because they want to throw daggers at you. If they only knew what we were thinking.
The non-alcoholic version.
Oh, lots of fun.
Thank you.
But, yeah.
Thank you.
That's what our election worker said too.
You guys deserve it more than we do.
Little, uh, token of appreciation, we gave all the poll workers as they brought supplies back on election night and those were the actions. So they put a cute little saying on them. This group's so creative. Creativity does not come from me.
These were the non-apt, I assume they have thought once, they kept.
Well, they no longer exist.
I've got my ruler out. This is the only thing I use this for.
I know, the long one.
The official canvas ruler?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. It's my pleasure.
It went, went pretty smoothly.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're giving the report on the radio, it comes back, there's fifty-nine percent registered vote.
Probably after about everything, we'll have about sixty, I think.
Talking about the last. Or, you know.
Last three.
There's been higher than that.
Actually, what I had expected, I, I was, uh, the odd man out and kind of expecting that. But I said that early on.
Some people just stayed home.
Was the original two candidates, neither side was overly thrilled and with the final two, I, I, you just didn't hear a lot of enthusiasm. Everyone said they expected record and I said, hmm, I'm not so sure.
One of Vance's ballots.
Oh, yeah, the advance. That's a trend that does continue to go up and that's what some people were thinking, but also contribute to, you know, a high turnout overall. But I said at the beginning, we'll see if that, or if people are just using advance more and people were just using advance.
The abbreviations. It would be, you know, it's not registered, in our, it's not registered around the county, that's what the other one is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
And one, you know, that's not. You know. You know, and one D.
No ID, no ID.
Oh.
No ID.
Two words, okay, nevermind.
Uh, must be military. Somebody tried to vote twice. Right?
Not generally, they just meet the dead, they just miss the deadlines and people aren't aware and people put it off. No, it's not necessarily. People intentionally vote twice.
I just meant the one that says one A B.
She's, she was an elderly lady. She was very old.
What's nice about our system is if someone receives an advance ballot, it's marked on the poll books that they've already received it. So they want to vote, it's on place, they get a provisional, which of course is not valid and not. One of those security processes we have in place.
When does Secretary State's office validate?
Oh, I read that on the.
December first or December second?
In the federal electoral college, it's on the sixth, I think it is.
That one I don't know.
I think it's the sixth. Hey, Rich, take it away.
Morning, Commissioner, here's Barbara Riley, ten, third election official. Uh, now is the time that we have the official canvas of the election. And by statute, you as the board of county commissioners sit as the board of county canvassers in your capacity to conduct this. Uh, final certification of the official results. A lot of people forget. That on election night, those are just unofficial results. We still have ballots to process. And that is a big part of these provisional ballots, which you are about to be presented, one thousand one hundred and thirty-one of them. Staff will go through what are valid and not valid, partially valid. Uh, after the board, uh, receives that from the staff, they'll read through all of those at all various polling places. Board of County Campsers, feel free to ask any questions. Uh, once you do make the motion there on number four is the motion that will need you to make. Then we will take. Your ballots, process them in the elections office. Uh, our hope is to have all of this processed and the official results posted by the end of business today. We have a specific provisional ballot board that'll come through and process these for us. Uh, any questions with the process at this point, Commissioners? Susan will go ahead and, uh, read through all the polling places and the provisional ballots and recommendations. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll start with Riley County Advance and K S U Advance had a total of ten thousand four hundred and ninety-one DS three hundred votes. There were two hundred and eighty-one provisionals. Out of those two hundred and eighty-one, we recommend one hundred and sixty-two be counted as valid, eight is partial. And one hundred and eleven is not valid because sixty were not registered in the state of Kansas. Fifty were not registered in Riley County and one failed to provide their photo ID. In addition to that, we had three hundred and eighteen federal service ballots and FW AVs, which are confined, they're a federal write-in, um, absentee ballot for the federal offices. And we have six hand counts. So the total ballots cast for eleven thousand ninety-six. Advanced Mail had one thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight ballots. There were seven provisionals and we recommend all seven of those be counted as valid. The total is one thousand seven hundred and eighty-five. Ashland Community Center had seventy-two DS three hundred votes and one provisional. We recommend that one provisional not be counted as valid because they were not registered. The total is seventy-three. Blue Valley Methodist had five hundred and seventy-six DS three hundred votes, nineteen provisionals. We recommend seven be counted as valid, one is partial. And eleven is not valid because seven were not registered and four were not registered in Riley County. The total is five hundred and ninety-five. College Avenue Methodist Church had eight hundred and forty-nine DS three hundred votes, forty-six provisional ballots. We recommend fourteen be counted as valid, five is partial. And twenty-seven is not valid because eleven were not registered, fourteen were not registered in Riley County. One already voted and one failed to sign the provisional ballot. There were a total of eight hundred and ninety-five ballots cast. First Assembly of God had seven hundred and seventy-two DS three hundred votes and twenty-one provisional ballots. We recommend six be counted as valid, one is partially valid. Fourteen is not valid because eight were not registered and six were not registered in Riley County. The total is seven hundred and ninety-three. First Christian had two hundred and sixty-one DS three hundred votes and five provisional ballots. We recommend two be counted as valid, one is partially valid and two is not valid because they were not registered in Riley County. Total ballots cast for two hundred and sixty-six. First Lutheran Church had six hundred and eight DS three hundred votes. There were seventy-seven provisional ballots. We recommend twenty-nine be counted as valid, nine is partially valid. And third, thirty-nine is not valid because twenty-four were not registered and fifteen were not registered in Riley County. Total ballots cast for six hundred and eighty-five. Grace Baptist Church had three hundred and ninety-one DS three hundred votes. There were ten provisional ballots. We recommend three be counted as valid. And seven is not valid because three were not registered and four were not registered in Riley County. Total ballots cast for four hundred and one. Eats Community Center had three hundred and twenty-six DS three hundred votes and there were five provisional ballots. We recommend four be counted as valid and one is not valid because they were not registered in Riley County. Total ballots cast for three hundred and thirty-one. Leonardville Community Building had two hundred and ninety-one DS three hundred votes and ten provisional ballots. We recommend five be counted as valid. And five is not valid because three were not registered, one not registered in Riley County and one did not bring a photo ID. Total ballots cast for three hundred and one. Manhattan Public Library had four hundred and seventy-four DS three hundred votes, thirty-four provisional ballots. We recommend four be counted as valid, two is partially valid and forty-eight is not valid. Because ten were not registered and eighteen were not registered in Riley County. In addition to that, we had one hand count. The total ballots cast were five hundred and nine. Manhattan Senior Center had three hundred and sixty-three DS three hundred votes and there were thirty-four provisional ballots. We recommend fifteen be counted as valid, four is partially valid and fifteen is not valid. Because three were not registered and well, we're not registered in Riley County. Total ballots cast for three hundred and ninety-seven. Ogden Community Center had five hundred and eighty-eight DS three hundred votes and three hundred and two provisional ballots. We recommend one to be counted as valid, three is partially valid and two hundred and seventy-nine is not valid. Because two hundred and forty-nine were not registered and thirty were not registered in Riley County. Total ballots cast were eight hundred and ninety. Potter Fall had four hundred and ninety-seven DS three hundred votes and sixteen provisionals. We recommend that nine be counted as valid, one is partially valid. And six is not valid because five were not registered and one was not registered in Riley County. Total ballots cast were five hundred and thirteen. Prairie Rock had eighty-five DS three hundred votes and zero provisionals. The total remains eighty-five. Randolph VFW had four hundred and eight DS three hundred votes and seven provisional ballots. We recommend five be counted as valid, one is partially valid and one is not valid because they were not registered. Total votes cast were four hundred and fifteen. Riley City Hall had four hundred and fifty-nine DS three hundred votes and eighteen provisional ballots. We recommend eleven be counted as valid, one is partially valid and six is not valid. Because four were not registered and two were not registered in Riley County. Total ballots cast for four hundred and seventy-seven. Seenet Woods Clubhouse had four hundred and five DS three hundred votes and twenty-nine provisional ballots. We recommend ten be counted as valid, one is partially valid. And eighteen is not valid because thirteen were not registered and five were not registered in Riley County. Total ballots cast were four hundred and thirty-four. Sedalia Community Church had two hundred and ninety DS three hundred votes and five provisional ballots. We recommend one be counted as valid, one is partially valid. And three is not valid because one was not registered and two were not registered in Riley County. Total ballots cast for two hundred and ninety-five. Saint Thomas Moore Church had seven hundred and nine DS three hundred votes and twenty-two provisionals. We recommend eight be counted as valid, four is partially valid and ten is not valid. Because three were not registered and seven were not registered in Riley County. In addition, we had one hand count. Total ballots cast were seven hundred and thirty-two. The Links Clubhouse had five hundred and forty-three DS three hundred votes and fifty-seven provisionals. We recommend nineteen be counted as valid, six is partially valid. And thirty-two is not valid because fifteen were not registered, sixteen were not registered in Riley County. And one did not provide a photo ID. In addition, we also had one hand count. So the total ballots cast were six hundred and one. Trinity Presbyterian had three hundred and forty-five DS three hundred votes and thirty-eight provisional ballots. We recommend five be counted as valid, nine is partially valid. And twenty-four is not valid because three were not registered and twenty-one were not registered in Riley County. Total ballots cast were three hundred and eighty-three. Under Complex had two hundred and sixty-seven DS three hundred vote. DS three hundred votes cast, thirteen provisionals. We recommend three be counted as valid, three is partially valid. Seven is not valid because two are not registered and five are not registered in Riley County. Total ballots cast were two eighty. University Christian Church had six hundred and sixty DS three hundred votes and thirty-two provisionals. We recommend ten be counted as valid, nine is partially valid and thirteen is not valid. Because nine were not registered and four were not registered in Riley County. Total ballots cast were six hundred and ninety-two. Vineyard Community Center had seven hundred and three DS three hundred votes. There were twenty-two provisionals. We recommend five being misvalid, two is partially valid. And fifteen is not valid because eighteen or eight were not registered and seven were not registered in Riley County. Total ballots cast were seven twenty-five. Westview Community Church had four hundred and twenty-nine DS three hundred votes and twelve provisional ballots. We recommend one be counted as valid, three is partially valid. And eight is not valid because five were not registered and three were not registered in Riley County. Total ballots cast were four hundred and forty-one. Zindel Community Church had two hundred and sixty-one DS three hundred votes and eight provisional ballots. We recommend two be counted as valid, six is not valid. Because three were not registered and three were not registered in Riley County. Total ballots cast for two hundred and sixty-nine. Riley County totals for the twenty twenty-four general election were twenty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-three DS three hundred votes. There were one thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight advanced male ballots. A total of one thousand one hundred and thirty-one provisionals. We recommend three hundred and sixty-seven be counted as valid. Seventy-five partially valid and six hundred and eighty-eight is not valid for the previous reasons we just went over. In addition, we have three hundred and eighteen federal service and FW AV ballots. And nine hand counts. So the total ballots cast for this election were twenty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-nine.
Board of County Campsers, any questions?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask if he said the partially valid. What are those, what's? Why are they partially valid?
They're, uh, add, they voted in the wrong place and so where the registration was, they shouldn't have the opportunity to vote on certain ones that are on that ballot style. Because their actual residence is not in that district.
Okay.
So it's have to be counted by hand, of course.
It seemed, is that seen that they did not register, the numbers were higher than usual?
They were, the amount of provisionals not valid this time is typically, as I say, each election sixty to seventy percent, even in a presidential. Well, what happened, we did an extra good effort, I feel, on educating the college age kids this year. Uh, the ones that were not educated well on the process in, in advance was the military. Someone told they were let out at four and told to go vote, but as I say. Pete, nobody told them prior to vote registration to go register at the appropriate place.
That's why the numbers.
They'll probably majority run often.
That's what I think.
That hasn't happened that much in the past though, has it? Has it?
It does, it does, of course, but when they specifically let them out and instructed them to go do it. It's commonly what happened at K-State in the past as well, a professor in San election, it's election day, everyone go vote. Well, they didn't tell them prior to voter registration to go register. You still have to meet the letter of the law.
Right.
Cause I know you, we've done a lot of motion telling them, gotta get registered, but it's still.
And we did it, you know, on, on K-Man here at every press conference and at K-State, even on the radio, you know, I was on an inter, I had an interview there and. So you would hope people get the message, but you know, not everyone reads the mercury, not everyone listens to K-Man or the K-State radio station, so. Call voter responsibility.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, if the board is satisfied with that, as number four there has the motion that we need the board of county, county canvassers to make it approved. Then we will take provisional ballots and process them.
I would make a motion for the Board of County Canvassers, uh, approve the valid provisional ballots and partial count provisional ballots. And certify the official elec, election results of the twenty twenty-four general election.
Second, to move the seconded at the Board of County Canvassers. Approve the valid provisional ballots and partial count provisional ballots and certify the official election results of the twenty twenty-four general election. All in favor.
Alright.
Thank you, Board of County Canvassers, uh, have to acknowledge election staff, Susan, Anita, Kirsten, Annalise. Uh, the community does not realize their dedication, amount of hours that they put in and. Uh, the gray hairs that caused them all, none of them show it like me. I'm the only one in the office that shows gray hairs for some reason. But seriously, uh, just as I said with our tax person, if the taxpayers and residents only knew how serious these people take their job. And their dedication to Riley County and the community, it's to be commended. Uh, we always point out, you know, the election workers, of course, we can't do it without them. Have to acknowledge all the departments in Riley County to make our election successful. These department heads allow their staff to help us out. We could not do it without them. And so, and thank you for your support of election.
Bravo.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And it's all said and done, can we get a copy?
Can we keep these?
You can keep those. Yeah, I want to keep those.
I think we can get a copy set, but finally.
They'll be on the website. Uh, we won't have official breakout reports till.
I always like to get a copy.
And you can always, uh, print off, off the website as well.
Yeah.
Hey, how's everyone doing? Good?
I only have a big.
Next Commissioners, I'm up and then Jan is on raising Riley. What's that?
Back in the door, it's our next November.
Yeah, I noticed you had the boot on. I bet that does make it a little colder.
Yeah, well, you can't drive with it. I go, I've learned how to walk with it.
Good for kicking bread.
I thought she was on the basketball team. K-State's history with big men and feet problems.
Yeah.
I've seen a lot of PT. I see it has a, some, you bump up.
Get the pressure right.
Man.
Thank you very much.
But, oh, there's a camera.
Yeah, I'm sure. There's no way.
I, before I was just.
Be hitting both pedals at once.
They don't want you to flex it that much.
Yeah, we should be hitting a brake at the same time. That would not be good.
I decided to better do what the doctor says, or as much as possible.
Michael, how you doing?
Good, my dear sir, how are you?
Doing alright. Getting better and better each day.
Yeah, senior, even if I think, yeah. Three sixty, that's still pretty good.
And I don't even know that it's on the radar.
I'm sure. But R H I D, one of them was Riley County School District. Three eight, three's been told about it, but I don't think. Maybe they have.
Yeah, that's why I asked. Hopefully they have and they're getting educated on it. If not, they need to.
They don't just, didn't just pop up on their agenda.
That's what I'm afraid of. That's why I was thinking about that the other day.
Might not be a bad idea to reach out to both superintendents of seventy-eight, seventy-four.
Um, I've dated you seventy-eight already. Um, I see seventy-eight already, eighty-four, there's nothing out there yet, but.
But wouldn't hurt to keep them updated just in case. Okay, go ahead, Rich.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, just gonna give a brief report on detail report on raising Riley. Uh, Commissioners, of course, you know, uh, is the interim director of the Health Department's been having, uh, regular meetings with the supervisors, had one just this week, and those are going great. Uh, didn't talk with them. Uh, the first day of the new director's, uh, position, I believe, is December Uh, we're gonna have kind of an all-staff, uh, breakfast gathering, meet and greet type of thing that Tuesday, I believe, there. And so we'll be doing that to bring all staff together and supervisors introduction of the new director. Uh, things are going very well. Uh, the updates I get from the supervisors is very good. I've told the supervisors this and others, you know, it's and as long as I've been in this position, I've never been so well-educated on the great programs the Health Department, uh, does. And, uh, these people are dedicated to their job. They are passionate about their work and they do a great job at it. And so I would encourage anyone, uh, to take the time to get a little fami- more familiar with that. Uh, just like elections or tax roll or taxes or budget, you know, it's hard for the public to truly understand what all of us in our various services really provide and mean to certain segments of our community. And they do a great job of it. And so, uh, that's what we're hoping to do with the new director in place, you know, as I told the Commissioners, as long as we have your support, uh, budget and finance, and HR will be working closely with the new director uh, on policies and procedures and, you know, uh, being all one Riley County, and we've had those discussions with supervisors. And as well, Commissioners, want to express that. And, uh, hopefully the rest of the staff has as well. And so, so I think we're going in a positive direction. Things are going good. I'm very excited, more excited than probably anyone. As I've told them, you know, I've never wanted to be a Health Department Director. Uh, it's just to help them administratively, and I've told them they're the professionals in their various divisions. We're just there to provide support and guidance. And, uh, they've been very receptive to that. So Commissioners, have any questions?
And we're excited to see if the end movement forward too. You know, it's been a process over the fall. Appreciate everybody's work and efforts.
Yeah, and I think we, uh, got the new director hired in about as timely a manner as we could have with all the processes we had to go through. And, you know, we did do the second interview and I explained that to the staff and you know, kind of all the process the board went and analyzing and giving them confidence that we truly feel we made the best selection the board did in selecting the best director to help guide them forward, so. Think it'll be a good thing. Sounds like Diane's, uh, very excited to come on board and get going with the Health Department. And so that's, I said Elizabeth, there's Elizabeth, she's talked with uh, Diane, and she's very excited to get started. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Commissioners. You will have Jan up at nine, uh, ten twenty-five. I'm an hour off either way, didn't?
Okay, Jan.
Hi, Commissioners. Really nice outside.
Yes.
Um, first of all, I want to thank you, all of you, and Rich and Elizabeth for all the support that you've given on the entire Health Department in the last few months. It's been very, very much appreciated by our department. I know for sure and I'm sure across the board that it has been, so I'm, I completely appreciate it. Um, I usually come up here and I have all this stuff and all these numbers and all these graphs and things and and, and basically, we, we are just maintaining what we do every year, um, and keeping that same level of, of excellence going and um, I thought it was time for you to maybe get a little deeper understanding of what some of our little pods with Ann raising Riley do. And so this year, um, I, I just wanted to let you know that we offer a range of interconnected programs that are designed to by robust support to childcare providers, families, and children across Riley County. And one of our most recognized initiatives is a scholarship program, which provides financial assistance to at-risk families. But behind the scenes, the facilitators work closely with childcare providers who partner with us. Um, and they accept our scholarships and engage in required program activities. Um, so today, today I brought Renee Barish and Teresa Keen to share an overview of how they build strong professional relationships with these providers, offering valuable support and educational opportunities for professional growth. So, they are on.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. Um, I'm Renee Barish, so I have been working in the field of early childhood for the last nineteen years. Um, seven of those years have been with Raising Riley as an early childhood facilitator. Um, supporting childcare providers is essential for fostering um, healthy development in children and empowering families and strengthening our community and economy. High-quality childcare fosters early childhood development and helps children build essential cognitive, social, and emotional skills. This foundation is vital for children's future learning and wellbeing. Research shows that early years of a child's life are the most critical and determine later life, life outcomes. Due to rapid changes taking place in development from birth to age five, frequent screening is essential for early identification of developmental delays. We complete developmental assessments on Raising Riley children three times each year. We assess and monitor children's development across all key areas such as communication, gross motor, fine motor, social, emotional, and then early literacy and numeracy skills for our older kids. The results of these assessments be that it here with both the families and the providers. And then we offer them resources and activities to kind of help them, su- support them um, in reaching those developmental milestones and helping them, um, continue to develop the skills that they need. If there's any concerns with the child's development, we address these concerns with both families and providers and make referrals as necessary. During the last fiscal year, we made fourteen referrals to community agencies for evaluation for early intervention services. So we do work closely with Advent Toddler Services of Riley County and then also with the school district. Um, and they do further evaluations to get the child made qualified for special education. When a child shows early literacy and numer- numeracy concerns, our literacy uses a variety of evidence-based interventions that help support children's literacy and numeracy development. This includes both one-on-one and small group activities and games that help build on skills such as counting, number naming, quantity comparison, phonemic awareness, and rhyming. Interactive early literacy, or sorry, interactive storytime visits are offered and provided to providers on a monthly basis. During these visits, our early literacy facilitator models dialogic reading for providers and offers an iner- interactive learning opportunity through activities that support early literacy development. Research suggests that children benefit most from childcare environments that provide high-quality teacher-child interactions. We complete observations using the TeachDome class observation tool. It is the most evidence-based and widely-used observation tool that measures teaching quality through the lens of interactions. More than two hundred research studies have demonstrated that children in classrooms with more effective teacher-child interactions make gains in critical areas for success both in school and in life. By using this tool, we can identify areas which we need to support providers better so they can improve their interactions with children, which therefore will improve learning outcomes for the children in their care and the children of Riley County. Our early childhood block grant has established a benchmark score that's considered high-quality. And out of the fifty-four early learning environments that we completed class observations on this fall, only three of the fifty-four did not meet the high-quality, um, benchmark score. So we have a pretty big bulk of, of our providers are meeting that high quality, which we want to see. Um, providers that don't meet the high quality are receiving additional coaching and receive an additional follow-up observation in the spring. And I would say the majority of the time, they usually pass the spring one cause we really work with them in building those skills and increasing their actions, improving on their interactions with children. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Teresa now, and she's gonna talk a little bit more about the training opportunities we offer as well as provider socials and some of the coaching that we offer.
Be really good. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Teresa. Um, I've been in the field of early childhood for thirty years. Um, it is my life's passion. Um, I've spent the last five years every season Riley as an early childhood facilitator. Um, early childhood facilitators offer a variety of trainings tailored to providers' interests and needs. Types of things they're interested in learning about. Um, these trainings equip them with strategies for working with children and families more effectively. Um, professional development is crucial for early childhood providers as it equips them with updated knowledge, skills, and techniques to support young children's development effectively. By attending professional development, providers stay informed about the latest research, curriculum, and best practices in early childhood education. Ultimately, professional development not only enhances the provider's skills, but also directly benefits children's school readiness and their overall wellbeing. Raising Riley Professional Development is also approved for K D H E childcare licensing clock hours, which providers are required to complete every year. We plan quarterly socials for childcare providers, which allow them to build connections and collaborate with one another, uh, provide early childhood educators with a community of peers, um, and it's essential for their professional growth, um, their emotional support, and their job satisfaction. Um, a lot of our our family childcare providers in general, um, it's very isolating work cause typically they're the only one providing it. So these socials really, um, I think benefit them to have the opportunity to be around peers who are, you know, struggling with similar challenges. Um, so the networks also offer space to discuss challenges, receive feedback, and develop solutions together, which reduce feelings of isolation and burnt. Lastly, we provide guidance through coaching and mentoring during onsite visits and connect providers to additional resources as needed. Uh, by coaching and empowering early childhood providers, facilitators can contribute to higher-quality early education for their children in Riley County. Um, this positively impacts their readiness for school, their social, emotional health, and lifelong success. Thank you, giving us the opportunity to do what we do.
Do, do you just, cause I know the, the licensing people do other kinds, you guys just do Riley County?
Um, while we focus on Riley County providers, um, it's always open to them, um, first. And then if there are providers that, um, we build connections with through, um, could be outreach opportunities or things like that, then we make that available to them also. Um, so, um, to give an example, we have a training coming up with, um, challenging behavior this coming week. And, um, we have one provider from Dickinson County who will travel in to participate in that. So it's not a significant number, but we definitely try to make it available to them also. As far as our scholarship program goes, um, we partner only with Riley County providers or, uh, a provider that's in the Manhattan City Limits. Um, we look at them as contractors, and so, you know, we, we do that, but, but our children are all Riley County children.
And you, but you work just with people in childcare. Kid, if kids aren't in childcare, do they have access to some of these things?
If the child isn't in childcare?
Yeah, if they're just.
Um, they definitely have access. I mean, we'll do an assessment on anybody that, you know, wants to call and ask us to do it. We're, we're very open to doing that. Um, as far as our parent education and our, um, our family, um, engagement activities, those are open to anybody as well.
I, I don't think they know how not to do assessment. Teresa spent some time with my son, and I know they were interacting and she was doing her thing with them. It's just, that's just normal day-to-day.
We love what we do.
Any other questions, fine Commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work, ladies. Thank you, Jan. Next Commissioners, you have Mr. Bowler at ten forty.
I'm not coming by the way. I didn't know that I needed one, but now like you're, I need a paper. I, but I would steal as it was not on the map.
Now get better earlier.
What?
Yeah, get better earlier.
I don't know how much right there I need to get. I was falling asleep at seven.
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mike Bowler with the Riley County H H W November staff update. Happy to say we are finishing up on spring, our fall-spring infections two and three. They were completed in October and we will resume them again in the spring. Our final mowing of the year is underway. We're about eighty percent complete. And we're scheduled to be complete late November, possibly early December. Again, that's always dependent on the weather. It's also dependent on this time of year when we do the mow out all the way to the fence line. Deers like to jump over the fence, and they shed their antlers, and those are terrible on our tires. Unfortunately, we have lost four tires this year to deer antlers and metal debris. And that, that shuts down for a day and a half for that tractor before we get that up and running. So we've had a few more of those this year than we have in the past. I am happy, though, that we were able to maintain our schedule. We did have a retirement, and so we've been down a mower for the entire month of October, but I'm happy to say we are still right on schedule. So praise goes to my staff for doing that. They've just really stepped up and then really tried to get it knocked out pretty quickly, so keep everybody happy with mowing. Sprayers and spray railers are in the process of being winterized, and we continue to train, changing over two of our trucks to snowplows. Understanding maybe we're already hearing possibly a winter mix sometime soon, so we are prepared to help Public Works out with that. And we wanted to change two of our trucks over in anticipation of that. We do have a twenty thirteen Ford three-quarter ton that's aged out, and that will be a C I P request that I've submitted for twenty twenty-five. So that's for a different time. Just a little heads up on that. Kevin Wilcox is a new hire for us as an applicator. Kevin is a former military personnel. And he's also experienced. He comes from Shawnee County Noxious Weed Department, several years of experience there. He's been on for about a week now, and he is very happy with us, and we're very happy with him. So I think it's going to be a good hire for us and a good fit. On to the H H W. We did just have a clean-out last weekend in Howland. It's November ninth. We had over sixty participants, so that number maintains very high levels. Sixty-eight folks in four hours is quite a bit for us. We do have another clean-out December fourteenth. Again, no business waste or truckloads of material will be accepted at that event, but we anticipate the numbers in the forties or fifties for the December clean-out. As a reminder, as always, as I do every month, we do have latex paint to give away. Your office hours are Monday through Friday from seven-thirty to four. Give you assistance with that. And then we've had a couple of incidents of excitement here in last month of the H H W. We had one chemical come into our facility from a neighboring county. With its age, became extremely shock-sensitive. It required robotic disposal. We had the bomb squad, if you will, come in from Clean Harbors and had to robotically remove that and then put inert material in it under a Kevlar blanket, some other things. So that, that's exciting. That's where our training pays off, though. We were trained to deal with that, trained to see that. And our credit goes to Justin for seeing that and taking care of that. Ultimately, Marion County is going to be responsible for the cleanup costs for that, but that's kind of a proceeding business. When we accept materials like this, sometimes those happen. We also had another exotic material. Justin and I went down and removed over twenty pounds of sodium cyanide from a small storage shed in Harveyville, Kansas. If you're not familiar with sodium cyanide, it is very acutely toxic to humans. There's multiple methods of indigestion in the body, but all will prove to be fatal. So we relied on our equipment and our training on that deal. I can't say we're driving back from Harveyville. Justin and I didn't look at each other driving back saying, "Did you feel anything?"
Hair is kind of a different color.
If anyone is in exposure, I wouldn't be here talking. So all's well, but it's another example of sodium cyanide. It actually was used consumer-grade back in the forties and fifties as a coyote trap. They would put sodium cyanide in coyote traps, and it would shoot it in the nasal passages of the coyote. The coyote would die seconds later from that exposure. But in this particular case, we believe the individual was using this chemical to extract gold from a computer circuit, if you understand it. But we certainly weren't expecting twenty pounds of military-grade sodium cyanide. That's, that's what we dealt with, so.
Is the person still alive?
He is not. He's, I believe he passed through natural causes.
Cleaning out the house they found.
Yes. If there's some question, what we were doing in Harveyville, Kansas, as a reminder, were part of the Big Lakes region. And so we don't do this often, but occasionally we will have this exotic material. In this particular case, we were told it was like one jar. And when we opened up a nail military-size crate, it was quite a surprise. Twenty poisonous snakes in the box.
Hold your breath real quickly?
Yes. At that moment, we had to just remain calm and rely on our training. We can get the job done. So pretty proud of taking care of that. And but moving forward, I think because of things like this here this next year, I will probably be looking at, Justin and I do a lot of training for the state for these individuals, but it's a kind of reminder that maybe Justin and I can brush up on some training too, because we don't, we don't normally deal with exotics like this. But occasionally, just because of the nature of what we do, we're prepared for this. So I'll probably be looking at some further training.
And that's Steph has brought in from the other county. Did they know what it was when they brought it in?
No, it came from a, a science lab, and it is fairly inert until it ages. And I won't talk about what chemical that is, but it becomes, and if you mix it with other chemicals, obviously, we're aware that if you mix certain chemicals together, it can become very shock-sensitive.
Just knew what it was.
Based on the, the look of the, the jar, and we did some research on it, realized we had a chemist come in was able to identify it as something that needed to be dealt with by robotics. And that's, that's great for the company that we deal with, our Clean Harbors, or they have outstanding chemists to help us with that as well. And then finally, the Noxious Weed Department assisted with the election staff and the complement of the retrieval of the election equipment. This was one of our biggest elections we've ever assisted with, and we're just very grateful to the election staff. They had all the details planned out for us, so made my job and our jobs very easy. So very grateful for the job that they've done on that election. There was a lot of departments that, obviously. And just grateful that we're able to just follow the list of things they had for us. With that, I stand for any questions. We've had a couple of exciting things happen the last couple of months.
Yeah, the, the job that his staff does for elections is just tremendous. I mean, that is a Herculean job, picking up all that equipment and distributing it, and it's not like you can just drop it off. There are certain orders, things have to be dropped off on, and we got to inventory stuff now as we load it, as we unload it as part of the security, and so it's a more detailed process that even they have to go through now due to us being one of those counties that went through that high level of audit, and so we truly appreciate your work.
Well, I, I always say, I think it stands as an example of, you know, we talk about Riley County. That's a great example of how we all work for Riley County to get the job done. So I don't view it as as too many of things any different from any other department. So great working relationship, obviously.
And Justin is one of our supervising judges at Prairie Rock, and when we were getting hammered early on at advanced voting, we said, "Hey, Mike, can we steal Justin for advanced voting?" And he came down in his work attire for Noxious Weed and Household Hatchet Waste and assisted us with advanced voting.
I was a little concerned about that look.
It was perfectly appropriate for that day.
Well, that's what, I guess what's been the Monday before, because I had been here, I was cutting over the court outs or something. I had to go there. I came back down the alley and saw them all. Put all this rumble going on. Oh, they're all, they're loading up all the machines.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
I do have an action item here on the ball that's scheduled, but thank you.
Nope, it's just right after this. Roll right into it.
So I can roll right into it. Very well. Just to provide a little background, I think commissioners are aware of a piece of ground that the county has acquired. It's up in Bala. It's approximately four point six four acres of land. It's near the intersection of Jenkins and Row Road Avenue. You may recall back on July tenth, twenty twenty-three, Pat Collins came before the board here and discussed the concerns about the site, the amount of debris that was on that property. At that time, that included multiple abandoned vehicles, lots of foreign equipment, general debris. Upon inspection of that property, the concerns were confirmed. The property contained approximately fifteen abandoned vehicles, sixty-eight pieces of old farm equipment, and an old abandoned grain elevator, a large construction debris pile, also multiple fallen trees and pallets of construction equipment that are up there. Early September, action was taken to work towards cleaning up that land. At the time, the ownership vehicle was tracked by V I N and confirmed by Rick Pride, the Pride family. It's vehicles and equipment owned, were owned by the Pride family. They'd been storing items on that ground, kind of under the impression that they may have owned that property, or at least thought they could use it. Since then, obviously, that's been rectified. We understand it belongs to the county. So I met with the Pride family, and they agreed to have the equipment removed by November first. On inspection after that date, they have indeed removed the abandoned vehicles, the farm equipment. And actually, some of the area has been mowed out. We did put some signs up there for no further disposal. Unfortunately, in the last couple of weeks, a, another individual not related to the Pride family has dumped two trailers up there, a fifth-wheel junky trailer and a little pole behind. I've been in contact with him, given him several deadlines as of Monday. It looked like an effort had been made and dragged it about thirty feet, but it's still there. And we've been, I've been discussing it with the councilor's office about potentially getting R C P D involved, but that's maybe a discussion later date. But suffice it to say, most of the property has been removed, with the exception of the debris pile, the trees. I do have some photographs to share with you, but I've asked Public Works to give the commission here an assessment of the overall cost to clean up what's left. I do have a more detailed assessment, but this is just a synopsis of the equipment cost, the labor, and disposal fee. I would say that this estimation was based on the appearance of the ground on October fourth. Since then, the Pride family has removed quite a bit of the debris. And so I can anticipate that number going down somewhat. But at the end of the day, even if there's a little bit of debris up there, you've got to get the equipment up there. You've got to have the labor to run it. And I really think that the only number that may go down very much at all would be the disposal, because obviously the less things we have to pay to have thrown away, you know, the less we have. So this is a more detailed assessment from Public Works, just where the area is, kind of a synopsis of the material that's there, and again, the total cost. And as you see, that was prepared on October fourth. I do have some photographs. This is early on in the year. I think we all know what abandoned vehicles and junk looks like. So I, I didn't take a bunch, but this gives you a general idea. If you would just spread that photograph over five acres, that gives you an idea of what it would look like. There's some more items. This is the farm equipment. This is actually the grain elevator. You see, it's not actually the elevator. It's the dump station where then they used orders to put in the grain elevators, the elevators themselves, and then we remove them. But this is a big construction pile that's kind of on the west end of the property. That continues to grow despite no dumping signs up there. I've talked to the Pride family. Apparently, this area has kind of been used as a local dump for several years, and hence the amount of material we have up there. These photographs down here are now what this area looks like. This had all been full of pallets of construction material and debris. You can still see there's some debris left, but this gives you an idea that Pride family actually has even mowed. This is where you just seen that white van and all that material. All of that has been removed. This has been mowed. That prior photograph, you see all that farm equipment. That was all stored there. The inside of this grain elevator did have some miscellaneous construction materials that has since been removed by the Pride family. This is the, one of the trailers I just spoke of that showed up here in the last couple of weeks. They managed to get the front end of it kind of on a gooseneck, and then I guess decided it's too much effort, and now it's kind of blocking the roadway up there too. So I haven't, I haven't met with the individual yet over the phone. I've talked to him several times. He has given me one story after another of why he can't get it taken care of, and I've explained it, and I'm like, it's not the county's problem, it's his problem. This is the debris pile. It's kind of back there, but this had several abandoned vehicles on it. So a lot of that has been cleaned up as well. If I had to probably put a number on it or a percentage, I would say we're about seventy percent of the way there removing the farm equipment, and certainly has overall improved the looks of that area compared to that. With that photograph there, all of this has been removed. All of that. That's that photograph I just showed you. It's all cleaned up. So all of that's been removed.
Is that the Pride's house in the background?
The Pride owns most of the property up there. It is. Unfortunately, these items went from right here, they're right here. Most of them have just been moved literally right across the street. Having said that, the farm equipment was placed in the tree line. It's, it, it looks more organized. And I don't know, but I believe the exemption that this would be considered an ag area to some degree. I don't know. I'm not, that's not my line of expertise, but it certainly looks better than this did. And so with that, I just wanted to update the commission on where we're at on the cleanup, what could still be done, and if we choose to move forward, what possibly costs with that. I do think that this, this cost does not include some sort of fencing. I'm very concerned if we don't put some kind of barrier up there, if we clean this out and we hold on to this property for a while, regardless of signs, more of this material is going to show up. I don't have a number for you on that, of what fencing would cost. I don't think we would need anything fancy. Just some pasture bomb wire and some steel posts would be my guess. I'd be happy to give you that number moving forward, but I'm really just here to update the commission on where we're at on this.
We've fully ever tried to mow it. We need it. We wouldn't want our mowers.
Yes, sir. Yeah. The plan would be to have Public Works go up there with the skid steer, with the mower on the front. The skid steer doesn't have the tires on it, but yes, my tractors, we would absolutely destroy my tractor. So all the steel would need to be picked up. If we're going to mow this regularly, then the cost for cleanup would need to be done if we were going to mow this. But if, if the purpose is to just to get it more aesthetically pleasing and get the abandoned vehicles and stuff out there, we're there now, but to make it nice, it would, it would take what we outlined here.
Should possibly put up some trail cameras where the entrance is to see if any additional dumping goes on?
Well, we could. The problem is, it's, it's five acres. Um, and there's many points of entry onto that property. And you could dump a number of different places, and so you would have to have a lot of trail cams. I, I do believe that it's going to be curbed somewhat. Um, I, I, I don't know who's responsible for it, but um, I think once we would get it moved up, the key would be the fence, I think the fence would really stop it. I think even trail cams, I mean, it would certainly perhaps help in persecution of whoever's responsible for it. Uh, but I, I think the fence would be more of a permanent solution. And the trail cam idea is a good one, but we're talking a lot of ground.
Yeah, I didn't know if it had one point of entry.
It's, it's, there's multiple points of entry.
There's not much of a ditch there between the road and the property, so.
Yeah, it's been so long since I've been up there.
Well, yeah, it's a, it, we started, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, I was just wondering, uh, that total cost, where does that get absorbed into our budgets? One of our budgets, or who pays for that?
Public Works.
Public Works.
Public Works. He's got a lot.
Yeah. Thank you, and I, I did want to suggest as we wrap this up, right? Um, since we are also reviewing what the property might be used for in the future internally, we may want to delay making a decision about how. I mean, and that's, that, that's not necessarily just coming from me, that the other people that have, you know, given input on the issue. So I don't know, I just throw that out for the.
Well, we need to get it cleaned up, so that cost, we're gonna have to absorb that, but the rest of it, yeah, continue to discuss.
So the board like to give guidance on finishing the cleanup?
Yeah, I think we need to be able to do that regardless of what we're doing with the property, okay.
Well, trying to avoid it, getting jumped up again, it's silly to clean it all up and then, and then have it, you know, in a month, it's.
Well, we need to take action against those people that are doing that, that's, that's what we need to do.
But at the same point, if we expect others to keep theirs clean, how can we not keep ours?
Exactly.
Well, maybe fencing is something we need to think about too.
I, 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 my guess is commissioners, the fact that this number here on the disposal is likely going to go down. I can't imagine that fencing being more than maybe twenty-five hundred dollars, probably somewhere near. I bet we could absorb fencing in this proposed cost.
And remember, commissioners, the labor and equipment cost is already in the budgets. It's not going to require overtime, it's going to be regular hours, the equipment we have in stock and so.
Disposal is the only extra, right, in fact. A lot of that's been, it looks like, so.
The direction to proceed with cleanup, I think that was always only real ask was today, correct, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Get a motion on that?
Let's add, make a, um, yeah, I'd make a, a motion to move forward with a planned cleanup. Um, begin near mid-December or when conditions are favorable on this property.
Well, second.
And clean up to begin near or mid-December or whenever conditions are favorable, all in favor?
Right.
I think, thank you. Did a question, and one thing you said sent back. Some of the property owners to get the rest of the stuff off by December, so do we know who that other stuff is?
I do, I've identified both of them. When I talk about the other stuff, it's really the Pride family that has some construction material on there. Uh, and my proposal is, and I know that I've talked to them and they can make that deadline December first. Being that December first would be considered abandoned debris, um, and, and, um, although I haven't just specifically met with the Pride family, I'm certain to be agreeable to that, but I think it's important to set a date. It's a, the day, and I, I would propose that be December first, I think that's adequate.
Okay. Thanks, Michael. Next, Brittany's up.
Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer.
Yep, he gets to spend your money too.
I'm gonna have some more presentations coming up.
But first, I will start off with just regular monthly cash flows. Uh, we'll start with economic development. We've brought in a hundred and seven thousand, one hundred dollars, and we spent to date a hundred and thirty-two thousand, fifty-seven dollars. Bringing our unencumbered cash balance to three hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. County building, we have brought in three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and spent two hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Bringing unencumbered cash balance to two hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and two dollars. CMT, we have brought in fifteen million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. Spent two million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, sixty dollars, bringing our unencumbered cash balance to twenty-six million, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and five dollars. And I marked this one, uh, other projects to be decided, because that was the hardware refresh that we no longer have to pay for. And so I still wanted that marked as reserved. And, but we haven't decided what to do with that yet, so. Next, we have the half set sales tax, we have brought nothing in revenue for that. And spending a hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars, bringing the unencumbered cash balance to five million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. And then the point two percent cent sales tax, we have brought in two million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars. Bringing our unencumbered cash balance to four million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars. Any questions on my cash looks? Next, I have also added in ARBA. So this is a document that I presented a few weeks back, um, just showing the amount of money that we had when the money was transferred to us, the interest that we have earned, and then the various projects that we have assigned to these funds. And this is also our, um, internal tracking spreadsheet that we have on here, where we keep track of every expenditure. So this just goes through the different projects and how much money we still have left on those. Are there any questions on the ARBA? Any questions?
Thank you, Brittany. Next, Commissioner Amanda Webb, eleven fifteen. It's along, you're down here, right?
Yeah, it's along the way, so.
I live a block away, I don't, I'm not sure I've ever walked to work.
Even the old guy walk, even the old guy walks to work.
I live a block away and I've never walked.
Who still drives?
Oh, I don't, yes, I'm like, I don't get coffee if I don't have access to my car.
Oh, you get it delivered.
Yeah, I mean, I see DoorDash on there.
Yeah, I know.
Which means you're paying more than probably the price of the coffee to have it delivered.
Guys, I go into Starbucks is my cheers, like, everybody knows my name there. They, they wrote, not on this one, but on the one that I got for Clancy, they wrote shy. Because they knew my, my first name, they knew my order, I'm like, this is a problem. I have problems with a single man.
Just think of your stock dividend.
I heard they got a new CEO like two months ago.
Yeah.
Guy turned around Taco Bell, okay.
We're getting a brand new Taco Bell.
Yeah. Too bad he didn't buy Red Lobster and turn that around.
Oh, my gosh. I love the lobster.
I do too.
Yeah.
There's still one here, so. Like, when I was out in DC last month, I had chicken fried lobster.
What?
Why, I've never heard of that.
I've never heard of it.
Never heard of it either until I had it, and it was delicious. It wasn't quite life-changing, but it was an eye-opener. It was good.
That lobster rolls, but.
I have no idea when all these.
I read someplace called Ocean Near Seafood Place, it was delicious.
I do like lobster.
But out there, I mean, everything's fresh, you know, so we had to take the bandana off.
It does taste a little different.
We got the seafood tower, so just like, just big, like, a jumbo shrimp and oysters and a little bit of everything, it was, it was amazing.
Kind of an oxymoron, jumbo shrimp.
Well, you know, there's little shrimp and there's big shrimp. But I'll take. And cheap drinks there too.
Really?
Yeah, most old fashions only like eight bucks. Maybe they get, maybe it was a discount night or something, I don't know.
That's unheard of.
That's what I said, because I got my bill and I thought, wow, it was pretty cheap.
That's unheard of.
And decent, and I had like three or four of them, so you know, you think I would stock up, but I didn't. Wow, we were there for a while for most of the night, so.
Smoked old fashions are very.
Yeah, I'm not gonna kid you, all my group members are up there at home.
You gotta make them not too sweet for me, I don't like them too, too sweet, sometimes old fashions can get too sweet for me.
We, when that was what they were getting smoked last year.
Yeah, mm-hmm, those were good ones, those were not too sweet.
Yeah. You gotta just kind of mess with the balance of the bitters a little bit.
John didn't like them though.
He didn't like them the next morning.
So it was the guy behind us fell out of the chair, remember?
Oh, yeah, at least I didn't do that.
It comes stumbling in for breakfast the next morning.
He'll get four to dinner this year, so.
There's a quota this year, huh?
Yeah. Run us space, let's see.
Wow.
For one, it's enough to handle everybody. Is it, well, it was pretty packed in there last year.
It was, it has been, every year that I've ever gone, it's been packed. Well, I imagine you'll have the board covered with your staff and commissioners.
Well, yeah, commissioners decide if you're going, if you want to go, let me know and, yeah, we'll all fight over the last spot.
Because there's three of you that go to the conference.
So.
Yeah, why not?
I'm just gonna let the commissioners all choose if they wanna go or not.
Well, yeah, it'll be covered between the commissioners and your staff.
I will pull rank on Evan and Evan and will to them.
What a hero.
I might not be there till late Wednesday, if I go to the it has had a meeting on the the quarter plans, provided, provided, and they want to have to on the third at two o'clock.
Well, my original plan was I was gonna drive back to Kentucky, just go straight to Wichita, and I'm not, I'm not going back for the past year itself.
If there's any open, I would take one, but I don't anticipate there being a position open with a hundred and fifty bucks, so.
Oh.
Well, I'm only gonna be there one night. That's Tuesday.
Wednesday night.
I'm gonna be there like, it starts what Tuesday, I'll be there Tuesday night.
Okay. So you have the two commissioners then, I guess, like.
I'll be there Tuesday. Tuesday night and Wednesday.
Ready for Amanda, Commissioner?
Yep, go ahead.
Good morning again, Commissioners, Amanda Webb, Planning Director. Um, with our October planning and development staff update, um, so we'll start with Keys. Um, I'm sure Commissioner Fokie, Bill Jean, all this already, but we'll talk a little bit again, um, about the community meeting we had just this past Tuesday. Uh, we had about thirty-five people attending, so we were, we always hit a pretty good turnout with that group, which is always, always nice to get, to get folks there. Um, and we thank, uh, Brian Foster, our BG engineer, for being there, um, he talked a lot about the engineering, the design. Those different ins and outs, they also put together, um, a sewer preliminary, very, very preliminary, it's gonna change, it's already changed. Um, sewer alignment, um, map, kind of showing where, um, the sewer is gonna go, um, you know, in relation to people's homes and people's properties and the streets and all those different sorts of things. Um, they put that preliminary information together, as, as you recall, the last couple of months, they've been out there doing, um, survey work, finding where the, um, utilities are, all those different things. They have identified a few conflicts, like with the water lines and something about fiber, I need to talk to Sam on that. So just, um, you know, needing to move things to adjust. Again, that's why the, the map that they have at the, um, meeting on Tuesday night, um, was just very preliminary. Um, and, uh, Brian met with a few folks, well, actually, it was more than a few, several folks, kind of individually, one-on-one after the meeting. Um, you know, they kind of gathered around the, the map and he kind of chatted with folks, um, you know, about their particular properties. He's also often going to help coordinate, um, BG staff actually going out onsite and meeting people onsite at their actual, um, each of their properties. If, if they would like to kind of show where things are going to go in relation to, you know, their structures and all of that sort of stuff. Again, really good group, um, they had a lot of good questions, um, so we had a lot of good discussion. They still had some questions about funding and costs, which, you know, is, is to be expected. And now that we've gotten a little bit further down the line, they've, they're, of course, having more questions about how will it, you know, impact their yards and impact, you know, um, their properties and all of that, again, completely understandable, fair questions, and all of that's still kind of where we are to be, to be kind of determined, so. Um, again, really, really good meeting, we were glad to get out there with them again. I mean, it's been a bit since we've been out there. Um, I know, um, I had several folks come up and express appreciate, appreciation that we came out, that we were there and, um, you know, had information to share. We've been sending them, of course, their, um, emails to the listserv, and I added about ten emails, um, to the email group that people gave me on the sign-in sheet for Tuesday, so I'm glad that I have more folks to add to that list, because it's not everybody um, in the district, it's whoever has decided to provide us their, um, email address, so I know it's not everybody, but it being a small, tight-knit community, they talk to each other, so I know people are still getting the information, even if they don't get the, um, email directly, so. But I was glad to add a good handful of more emails to that list, so. So again, good meeting, we were glad to be out there, we're really glad, you know, things are moving forward. I think it's making them feel a bit better that they're seeing people out there too, you know, they're, they're seeing the surveyors out there, they're seeing the pink flags, the, the marks on the pavement, all that different sort of stuff, and it's making them really see that things are happening, so we're, we're really happy for that, so. Um, just a couple other things, Keys related, um, we are waiting to hear from the Kansas Water Office about their water projects, um, grant, it applies to their second round in August. Um, I checked in with them, I think it was last week, and they're still, um, working through all the applications, they got a lot, which is to be expected, so. Um, they're just waiting through all of those, um, and hopefully we'll make determinations. She told me as soon as possible, of course, but hopefully by the end of the year. So it's still gonna be a little bit, although the end of the year is not that far away, scarily enough, but, um, it's, it's still gonna be a bit. And as soon as I have information from them, or something that you folks know, and I told the community, I would let. As soon as I have information from them or something, you folks know, and I told the community, I would let them know as well, so. Hopefully we'll get some more grant funding, if not the whole remainder grant funding, at least some portion would be great. Um, but we are waiting to hear from the. Water Office on that. Um, the technical assistance grant, that's going along just fine. We, um, submitted our second quarterly report. And are waiting for reimbursement through that, but that was going along just fine. Um, I talked to KDHE late last week, um, about the. Small town water and sewer infrastructure assistance grant, that's the just north of two point five million that KDHE, um, is providing for this project. So they have their grant agreement in concurrence, and then we'll be getting that, um, hopefully here. Soon that we can get that signed and we can get, um, get that part moving. Again, that's for construction, so it's. We still have a bit of time before we need to use those funds, but it would be good to get that all settled, but, um, that is in, um, progress. Um, let's see, so USDA funding, um, we finished all of the different pieces for the environmental assessment. The environmental assessment was accepted by USDA. We've, um, published and had the appropriate comment periods for the various documents. We needed to publish the notice of application as well as the. Fonzie, which is the finding of no significant impact. That's all done. Now they're just working on their underwriting. And then there's a few different documents we need to provide to them, budget stuff, user agreements, things like that, that we need to provide to USDA before they can. Um, obligate funds and issue their letter of conditions. So we're working on all of that. We're also working on some clarifications, um, with USDA about what exactly. Needs to be done, so. Everything's going along just fine. It's just, you know, all the different steps and pieces we need to hit, so. Um, as usual, I'll just keep you folks updated and I'll keep the community updated, but everything is going along fine. Um, for the USDA, we don't know yet. What, what if any grant portion that's gonna be? If you folks recall, we are eligible for up to forty percent grants. Um, but it could still come that we get no grant and it would be all alone. So we're still waiting to hear what that split's gonna be. We probably won't know until we get the letter of conditions, which is still gonna be a little bit. I'll keep you posted, but again, even though we're eligible, it could still be no grant funding and it would all just be loaned. So either way, we'll get. Funding from USDA. It's just a matter of. If it's all gonna be loaned or if there's gonna be a portion of grant or how that's gonna suss out, so. Any questions on Keiths?
Do they have a guess? Does BG have a guess on the? And they'll have the plans ready.
Like the design?
Yeah, ready.
So it's, it's still gonna be a little bit, so it's probably gonna be at least about six months until they can get all the, um, design pieces all put, put together. Um, and then it'll have to go to KDHE and some other review entities to. Do their part and, um, you know, review everything. That'll take a couple of months, so probably next summer is what we're looking at for. Um, their designs to be ready to go.
That's a long time.
Oh, I know. I wasn't expecting to be done.
Yeah, I was just like.
And how long do they, how long was the project gonna take?
So they'll, again, they'll do their design, which will be about next summer, KDH will have a few months. I'm sorry.
Then they'll have some idea.
So they're estimating, so it'll be about a year. Construction will be roughly about a year. They're estimating it'll start in early twenty-six and end in early twenty-seven. There, as we get closer, it, that could shift a little bit and could, you know, shrink and could move up, um, but that's what they're estimating right now. Anything else Keith's related or? Commissioner Foki, is there anything I missed?
No, uh, you didn't. That sums it up very well.
Good, yeah. Yeah, lots, lots of things happening with Keith's as, as it has been this year, which again, I know it's been a lot of work, but we're really happy that things are. Things are going along and progressing and we're. Around the point we are and things are looking good, so. Um, let's see, so, um, skip down to strategic planning. Um, Shaki did, um, give us the draft, uh, report, um, I believe it was early October. And then the budget planning committee, the retreat team, I should say. Um, we all took a look, made some comments and sent those back to Shaki for updating the, uh, report. They're gonna get that to us in the next week or so, and then I'll have copies for everybody at the, um, November twenty-one county officials' luncheon. I know that's a topic of discussion there.
What's the holdup on the comprehensive plan?
Um, we're still waiting for the contract to be settled.
Okay, I gotta get back some revisions to it.
We've been waiting quite a long time on that. We need to get moving on it.
Anything else with strategic planning? Sorry?
No, it sounds good.
Okay, yeah, we'll have that reported in just a couple of weeks or the. Um, the LEPP grant, the local environmental protection program grant, um, that we got fifty thousand from KDHE. Um, if you recall, we, um, had a sixty-day window that we opened up for applications and that closed on October fourth. We got five applications during that period, um, and just a reminder, they were raised by need applicant income and severity of failure. They are, uh, up to a hundred and thirty-three percent, um. Load of low income or, or income, um, as per the, uh, uh, federal got poverty guidelines. Would be eligible for up to a hundred percent funding through the grant and then one hundred and thirty-four to two hundred percent. So we had the five exceeded, um, even the two hundred percent. So that unfortunately automatically made them, um, not qualified for the funding, so. Two of them, um, fell within the, um, necessarily necessary income. Um, guidelines, we were able to, um. Uh, and I'm sorry, I'm just tripping all over my words. Both were for full system replacements. One was a standard system and they were eligible for up to eighty-five percent. That one's in, um, in progress. And so we're gonna disburse funds to them here soon. And then the second one was for an alternative system. And that one was eligible for a hundred percent, um. Uh, reimbursement, so we're working with them as well. Um, so with that, with both of those applications and both of those property owners, we were able to help. That's gonna leave us, I know I have thirteen seven fifty in there. It's actually gonna be a little bit closer to about thirteen thousand. Um, one of them came in a little bit higher, because once they, once the contractor got on site, they discovered some things that they were only gonna know. When they actually got in there, got into the system and got into the ground to see. So that one wound up being a little bit higher. So we're gonna have about thirteen thousand dollars left. Um, as part of the fifty thousand dollars. And we're gonna open a second, um, application window here very soon, another sixty, uh, sixty-day application window. And get, you know, get all the applications in that we can and, and spend the remaining amount of money. Um, but we were, um, glad that we got, you know, some applications we were able to review. Glad we were able to, to help some folks so far. And I don't have a concern that we shouldn't be able to spend that remaining amount helping, helping other property owner, so. Um, we did get notice from KDHE that they're gonna open, that they're gonna open another, um. LEPP grant period for twenty twenty-six, so we'll be, um, applying for that. Well, of course, I'll, I'll come to you folks first to make sure that's okay, but that's my intent to apply for that. Um, it's, it's an easy, I, I know fifty thousand dollars isn't necessarily a huge sum and we can only help so many folks. But it's, it's an easy enough, considering it's, it's a grant application, it's easy enough. KDHE is very, very helpful and supportive when we're doing these things. It's worth the time, in my opinion, it's worth the time to apply, get this funding and work with folks to see how we can help folks, so. Um, we'll have more conversations about that soon, but just wanted to let you know that that was out there. Um, let's see. I think I've hit what I wanna hit. Did you have any questions for me? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Amanda. Next commissioner, yeah. With an executive session. Clancy, you know how long it's gonna need to be?
I think. No, I don't. I'm trying to think if I got an estimate. Sorry. I was surprised if I had a guess, maybe a minimum thirty.
Right, you know, about how much time you're gonna want for the exec?
I was thinking thirty.
Okay.
There's gonna be some discussion with them.
Yeah, no problem. Just curious.
I was thinking, I was thinking, I think if we do twenty, then you guys may wanna go back and it's probably better to just do thirty. I know everyone's excited for about thirty minutes executive session.
Fun way to end with that.
Since his counselor's fault, he buys lunch, right?
Have the lunch hour now, yes, something like that.
Thank you, Brian.
Sir.
We've moved county commission, including Chairman Ford, Vice Chairman McKinley and Commissioner Foki. Recess into executive session on potential litigation. Clancy Holman, County Counselor. Brian Parker and Jacob Hanson, Deputy County Counselors. Attorneys for the commission, which we be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. An exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act. Your meeting resume in the county commission chambers at twelve noon. Rich Fargo, County Clerk, John Allerman, Rep. Public Works, Amanda Webb, Planning and Health Director, will be present during a portion of the executive session. Provide factual information.
All right, second up.
Been moved and seconded to the county commission, including Chairman Ford, Vice Chairman McKinley and Commissioner Foki. Recess into executive session, potential litigation with Clancy Holman, County Counselor. Brian Parker and Jacob Hanson, Deputy County Counselors, attorneys for the commission, which should be deemed privileged. In the attorney-client relationship, an exception to the open Kansas Open Meetings Act and the open. Uh, meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at twelve p.m. Hold in favor.[1296.98]
Rainy, it's been a while.
For county commissioners.
Ready for motion? Thank you, James.
I move the board of county commissioners come out of executive session.
I would second that.
The move to second the board of county commissioners come out of executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Move the record reflect action, shall we take in consistent with the consensus reach in executive session?
I would second that.
The move is seconded that the action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reach in executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
That's it, it's been a long day.
This is Marla. Score, John?
I'm not gonna put much commentary to it. I'm gonna go twenty-eight, twenty-four.
Great. Thirty-five, thirty-one.
I'm good, thirty-eight, thirty-three.
Brian?
Twenty-four, seventeen, K-State.
Give me a battle. Jacob, what do you got?
You seventeen, ten, K-State.
Defensive battle. I'll say twenty-seven, twenty-one.
See how it goes.
We win. How long? I don't care who wins.
Let's say twenty-three, two.
And I say this is Marla, looks top like this and you go back, it's the next road end. Well, past the trade of course. Right there is the historic Rocky Ford School. Barnes Road, go back.
You know, I was just out there.
Okay.
Too long ago and I went by the trade horse and saw it.
I don't have anything else there.
Yeah, me either.
Just in motion.
I would make a motion to to adjourn the November fourteenth meeting of the Raleigh County Commissioners.
Second, the move is seconded to adjourn the November fourteenth meeting of the Raleigh County Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Everyone have a good weekend.
What date is this?
We've got one P M Zoom but all texts.